Call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. First item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan housing charter update. Take it away, Matt.
All right. Thank you Chair. I also want to take a moment to recognize our new planning commissioner.
Yeah.
Mr. Jason Young. I won't have you tell us a little bit about you because that's embarrassing, but um. But we'll get to that later, you bet. Okay, well, welcome. I'm going to kick things off for us tonight and then I'll hand it over to our consultant, Ms. Anna East, who will tell you more. So this is a quick agenda of what we're hoping to do tonight. We're going to give you an overview of the project. We're going to recap what happened in the last meeting we had here with our advisory committee. And then we're going to go into a group discussion on the actual draft policies that we sent out for everyone to review. All right, so we'll start with a project overview. And of course, housing is at the core of our community and it supports jobs and industry, which is one of the reasons why we need to make sure that our housing element is updated. Millersburg has to plan for housing to meet the needs of our current and our future residents. And we do that through our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is a little older. It was adopted when the, a little after the city was formed. So it was formed in seventy-four and our first comp plan was adopted in eighty-two. So it's been around for a little while. And we are starting a major kickoff to revise the entire thing, but that's very expensive. So we're doing it in bite-sized chunks. And our first chunk is the housing chapter, which we have before us today. And so the purpose of this project is to update the goals and policies and address the housing needs. And what isn't on here is we're also having 3G help us with a rehash of the graphic look of our comprehensive plan. And so this will be the first piece of that. And then every other chapter we revise will just follow suit with that graphic look. So it's going to look a little different than the rest of our comp plan, but that's by design. Sure, sure, sure. There you go. You bet. This version you have here doesn't have the graphic stuff incorporated any yet. This is just the bare bones policies. The graphic stuff will be the next step. But we'll talk about next steps at the end of this all. So your role, which I wanted to remind you that you're not really here wearing your planning commission hat. You're here as an advisory committee on the project. Just happens to be the planning commission, so you're just wearing two hats. And this is the second of two planned meetings with our advisory committee. And again, the intent is to review the draft that we have here before you today. We'll hit this in the next steps part as well, but we are planning on having this come back to the planning commission to take an official action. But that's the next step, that's not tonight. This will be the last advisory meeting. So let's talk a little bit about kind of the backbone of our housing chapter. And that comes from a housing needs analysis that we recently completed here in the city. Housing needs assessment, it basically just shows that we're compliant with the state's goals and state goal ten is specific to housing. And so this makes sure that we're consistent with that. A comprehensive plan is kind of a miniature version of the state's goals and it's reflected in each of the elements. And our housing element reflects goal ten. It assures that we have a twenty-year supply to accommodate the projected housing for the next twenty years in the city of Millersburg. And it provides backup data to support that, the needs for the next twenty years. And it recommends strategies for the city to consider going forward in the future. So what were some of the key findings that we found in that housing needs analysis? Is obviously we're forecast to grow. The state provides, well, Portland State University provides projections and we use those. The projections they provided were a little smaller than what we've historically been doing. So even though they think we have enough room in our city to accommodate the next twenty years, we're not so sure. If you take the historical trajectory that we've been doing for the past twenty years, we're going to run out of land a lot faster than twenty years. But that's okay. When that happens, when we start bumping up against that, we'll go to the state and talk about expanding our urban growth boundary or changing our zoning or something to bump up our ability to accommodate more housing. But we don't have to talk about that yet. It also said that we had a need for more affordable housing in our community as well. So what we're going to do now is change gears. I'm going to send you over to, oh no, I'm going to go over the, oh no, you want to go over the first meeting. Okay, we're going to change gears now and Ms. Anna East is going to take over and recap what we did at the last advisory meeting that we had here with you folks. You bet. Yeah, the microphone is actually capturing the record and it's also transmitting to folks at home. But just so you all know, nobody's tuned in yet. We're webcasting, but nobody's there.
Right. Um, okay, so just a bit of a recap. This title is misleading. I wanted to recap not only what we discussed at our last meeting, which was in June, but then also just a refresher on the engagement and the outreach that we did to kind of arrive at the concepts that are presented in that draft goals and policies document. So next slide. Um. Uh, oh my goodness, I guess I did switch the slides, so I'll just keep going here. So when we had our meeting last in July, oh my goodness, June, apologies. You all had the current housing chapter in front of you. And we walked through, if you recall, the goals and those current policies that we have for housing. I think that we walked out of that meeting with a lot of really great feedback from all of you after having walked through those policy statements. It was clear from the feedback that we got that there were a lot of repetitive concepts, just things that were said in a variety of different ways and sprinkled throughout the housing chapter. There was also some interest from this group to define more specifically some geographic areas for more targeted policy action. There was also interest in what we call aging in place concepts. So thinking about projected populations and changing demographics over the next twenty years. And part of that is just growth of elderly. And you know, how do we, how do we create policies that create housing opportunity that allows folks to age in their communities? So that was a concept that I know we all discussed. There were also a number of policies that you had all indicated that were no longer applicable or felt very relevant anymore. And then there were some comments about ensuring that all of the language, when we were kind of identifying specific populations or groups in our policies, that we were using kind of non-discriminatory language. So that was the feedback that we got at the last meeting. Was there anything else that comes to mind or thoughts or reflections on the conversation that we had that I may have not captured or I missed? Um, great. So I thought that was, that was, you know, really, really good direction from us. And then at that last meeting, we were also able to present to you kind of all the work that had been done in terms of engaging with the community around this topic. Of course, it's a, you know, can be a very contentious, housing itself can be a very contentious topic. If you want to go next slide, oh, this is me, I guess I could do this.
You can, if you like, I would love to change for you. It's the, it's a weird.
Okay. Oh. All right. Um. Yeah, so to develop those concepts, as you recall, we had two online surveys, one of which I'll share with you this evening. There was also an open house in May. And then staff was available at two community events where there was a booth, City of Millersburg booth, where we engage folks around what they love about living in Millersburg and kind of what they want to see in the future here. So those were some of the outreach events and activities that we had around this topic. Here are some nice photos. This was at our open house and then also Matt had a booth at the Grange. We also had a visual preferences kind of activity at our engagement events where folks can kind of show us what types of housing they liked or types of housing that they liked less. And then we also had a pretty comprehensive online survey. If you recall, it was live all of spring and then it closed in June. We had a lot of comments about just really loving Millersburg, the large lots that are in Millersburg, really, you know, kind of not having big apartment buildings or multifamily complexes, a lot of comments around having adequate parking, also some interest in expanding city limits to accommodate any needed housing, also interest in things like accessory dwelling units and mother-in-law apartments as just a tool in the toolbox for thinking about a greater variety of housing options. And we did have a number of comments about retirement communities. And so that really echoes kind of what we heard in this conversation in June about that aging in place concept. Um, so that was the first survey. We did launch a second survey this in August, essentially to share out the draft goals and policies that were developed based on that feedback and based on this conversation. It was online for about one month. We did not have a great turnout on the survey. We had probably about like fourteen comments back on it, so not a ton. But generally speaking, I mean, these surveys are certainly not built or designed to be statistically significant. They're really just information for us. They give a pulse and they're important in that way, but not meant to be a statistically valid survey. And you know, you may have seen in your packets that a lot of the comments actually really echo a lot of the comments that we heard, we heard in the first survey. So there wasn't, there was actually congruity between both of those, both of those online surveys. Any, any questions about either of those items or any of the outreach or conversation? Any reflections? Okay. Um, well, yeah, as Matt said, the purpose of this evening is to essentially walk through these new housing goals and policies that we've developed based on this feedback that we got from you all as a group and the outreach. So I'll walk, essentially I'll do what we did last time. So I'll walk through the goal and then I'll walk through the policy statements. I'll kind of explain how we kind of reorganize the information and the content. And then my hope or like the objective of this evening is to be able to understand if there's any edits or revisions that you would like us to make, that we can do that. And then if, just confirming those and then getting a sense from you as a group if this is something that you would like to consider at a hearing for a planning commission in the coming months. So that's kind of the objective. Here, if you go back to that slide, I'm just going to go, yeah, I'll speak to that. So what is in this new housing chapter? So the background information you'll notice is way shorter than what it once was. I think once it was like fifteen pages of, of background information. We are seeing a trend towards comprehensive plans that are a little bit more succinct and they have a pretty brief overview. And then what they do is that they reference the technical documents like a housing needs analysis, rather than directly embedding a housing needs analysis into the comprehensive plan. So it's a little bit easier to update and you're just, you know, kind of updating the date of the document and referencing.
More user-friendly.
Yeah, much more user-friendly, just referencing kind of the key concepts, but really referencing more technical documents rather than, as I said, folding them directly into that chapter. So you'll see the background information is a little bit more succinct. It describes just what statewide planning goal ten is. And then it also pulls in some of the key findings from the housing needs analysis, which is a requirement of goal ten. So a little bit more of a succinct background. And then in terms of your goals and policies, I probably should have shared what it once was because I know that was, the last PowerPoint had what it once was. But I think we had nearly thirty-five various housing policies. So now we're down to twenty-four and we've kind of reorganized them across three kind of key themes or key ideas. So the organization of these concepts is a little bit different. If you recall, I think the organization of policies in the existing comprehensive plan is, is around like maybe nine or ten different things, some of which I think all of you agreed felt a little moot. So now hopefully that this organization feels a little bit more straightforward and kind of provides a clear policy, like overall policy direction for housing. And so we organized new policies around the principle of planning for new neighborhoods, of retaining the quality and character of existing neighborhoods, and then also around the principle of housing for all. So that's how we organized it. And now I'll just kind of walk through the policies. I just copied them onto the slide. They are also in front of you. My apologies that it is a lot of text. I more so just wanted to verbalize these out loud and have an opportunity to talk about anything. The first, the first kind of subset of policies is around, I realize. Actually, can you go to the next slide?
Sure.
Because we start with one goal statement that is meant to kind of capture the spirit of the entire chapter. And this actually builds upon some language that was in the existing chapter, but just refines a little bit. So now that the goal of housing from a city's perspective is that the city shall provide the opportunity for a full range of housing options in order to meet the various needs and preferences of both existing and also future residents while retaining the character, the quality and the livability of Millersburg's neighborhoods.
This was one of the things we really saw come across in all the surveys where everybody said they loved Millersburg the way it was, don't want any apartments, we love our ten thousand square foot lots. So we tried taking all that input and turning it into this, which we felt was a very succinct statement to kind of capture all of that. The previous housing chapter had several different goals, but we figured that was just superfluous, it wasn't necessary. So we just shrunk it all down into this one and then all the policies follow this.
Well, it seems to me, you know, looking back over the survey responses, that people aren't really aware of the legal needs that we have to diversify. I mean, I understand their reasoning, you know, who doesn't want to live in a nice quiet little place? But it doesn't.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem that they understand.
Yeah, a lot of people really seemed to take a lot of animosity from the one goal we had that talked about manufactured homes and the fact they're allowed on any single-family lot. And while I can understand how they would read that and have kind of a visceral reaction to it, that's actually just regurgitating state law. So we could strip that and leave it off and that's fine. But it doesn't change the fact that they're still allowed to have a manufactured home next to them on any single-family lot. If it's in the comp plan or not, doesn't change that. So we were just trying to echo that and get a little, you know, pat on the back from the state for having it in there. But we can always get rid of it too, if we need to.
I think I'd like to put in a parking lot and, you know, how, maybe he'll discuss it, but how do we?
Yeah.
Get our lead across.
Yeah, no, I understand. I hear the, there, it is not atypical to sometimes have a disconnect between the community and understanding what the city does. There's always a disconnect between, you know, why is the city planning for housing? Or knowing that the city even has to plan for housing and what that looks like. So I recognize there is, there's often a disconnect with the community and there's really a strong education component to any of these projects. You know, the, when you kind of do a comprehensive plan, there, I think the opportunity when you do an entire comprehensive plan update is that the education piece is really strong and it's right up front. And then you can get into conversations about things like housing when you have that context. As Matt said, that's a huge process, it's expensive. So you know, we have to kind of do the best we can with that education component when we are talking about one thing like housing. And we also, as a, as a committee and as practitioners, understand that housing is, is a very integrated point, a piece of a lot of things in Millersburg. It's not just housing, it's a lot of other things like infrastructure and, you know, access to nature and things like that. So we understand that, but it's certainly the education. Yeah, yeah, certainly. And it's, it does, you know, I think that the, the move is to continue to use planning processes such as these to push that education component further. These are always opportunities to get in front of the community, talk to people about what the city does and how they do it. And this is one of probably and hopefully many projects you will have where you have that opportunity for that education piece. But yeah, I agree. It's, it's always a challenge and it's, I would, you know, that's a challenge. And then I would also say just in developing goals and policies and, and thinking strategically around this framework and, and looking at the data and then listening to your populace, we're always striking the balance of, we're always striking a balance. You'll see it specifically in this chapter, or sorry, in this, in this goal. And you'll see it throughout all of the policies as well. What, what I think is important is to have some flexibility in your policies. You want to acknowledge community priorities. You also, you know, there's certainly some, some legal component to it, but then there's also a component of the spirit of, of, you know, in this case, planning for housing for all. So it's, it's always walking a balance and hopefully these goals and policies kind of help strike that in maybe a little bit better of a way.
Right, right. Did you want to go back to the previous slide now?
No, I think we're good. Does anybody have any thoughts or reflections on just that, that goal statement as kind of the, the framework for our, our three areas of policy or three policy areas?
One of the things that it, it doesn't mention, and maybe that's because in goal ten, it doesn't talk about meeting the essence of goal ten in it. I mean, it, it says very nice things, a full range of housing options in order to meet the various needs and preferences.
Well, that's goal ten.
That is goal ten.
Exactly. But as far as the legality of it, I guess.
That is more than, I was, that is sufficient for the legality of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just that for people to understand that this is, I mean, we have to do it. And I don't know how you say that. And I also thought, I don't know, by jumping ahead at number eleven on page three.
We'll get to that.
You're jumping way ahead.
So we're talking about the goal, but we'll move, let's, let's, we can move into the policies. Let's do that. Let's start with. Planning for new neighborhoods. So let's.
That's not this slide.
Yeah, no, sorry. Why are the slides all out of place?
Got a bit out of order, didn't they? Here we go. Okay, got it.
Yeah, planning for new neighborhoods. So as you recall, there's three components. There's, and this comes kind of, you know, from, from our discussions and our outreach, but there's a need to plan for future growth. There's also a need and desire to kind of retain the quality and livability of Millersburg's existing neighborhoods. So that's the second kind of set of policies. And then the last is speaking to that housing for all concept, which a lot of your current policies were kind of getting at, but maybe not in a very succinct way. So we'll start with planning for new neighborhoods. We have nine policies here. Was, Carol, was this one of the comments you had or should we? Later, okay, great. So I'll just work, start here. So policy one, that is, you know, just a requirement, but planning for a twenty-year supply of suitable land for Millersburg to meet housing needs throughout, through regular monitoring and adjustments of available residential land. So that speaks to having things like a housing needs analysis and just, yeah, monitor, monitoring your land needs. Policy two, identify opportunities to ensure the housing supply includes a variety of housing types and unit sizes in appropriate locations in the city that support a range of housing prices. Number three, encourage housing that is of a design and quality that's compatible with the neighborhood in which it is located. Four, promote the development of new housing in areas with access to services, amenities and transportation connections. Five, encourage construction practices that result in high-quality development and reduce the industry's impact on the environment. Six, encourage, encourage innovative design and planning concepts to reduce the cost of housing and services through code review procedures. Number seven, ensure a balanced ratio of jobs to housing by regularly assessing residential land needs relative to employment land needs. Number eight, coordinate with partners and service providers to develop infrastructure that supports residential development. And then number nine, utilize UGV expansion areas for the development of new master-planned mixed-use communities that are highly walkable and serviceable with public transit.
A number seven, a balanced ratio of jobs to housing. What exactly does that mean?
Um, I think that is in response to some communities having too much housing and not enough jobs and other communities having too many jobs but no housing. And so either end of those spectrums can pose problems for cities. And, you know, I think having a balance of good jobs with adequate housing is likely in anyone, any one community's favor.
We don't have a lot of jobs in this community.
Oh, are you kidding? We have ETI and Aruko and.
It's a very job-heavy community.
South of concert, we've got lots of jobs.
It's a very job-heavy community.
I always think of people working in Salem, Haverhill.
Right. Well, there is that too, absolutely. But it's kind of looking at that. So it's the opportunity to just assess, you know, who are the people that are living here and who are the people that are working here? Who's commuting in, commuting out? What kind of income do we have in Millersburg based on those commuting patterns? And then, you know, being able to understand what kind of housing preferences a, a community like Millersburg might need or want in the future based on the types of jobs that are here or elsewhere. So, yeah, I think it's, it's providing the opportunity to, to better understand what that balance could be or should be.
I mean, I know we have lots of jobs, but what we don't know is the people in Millersburg in those jobs.
Our housing needs analysis took a look at that. And to tell you the truth, it was kind of startling because it, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it said that most of the people who work in Millersburg don't live in Millersburg. And most of the people who live in Millersburg don't work here. And they wake up and drive out of town. But I don't think that means we need to try and not strive for a balance there. And this is also trying to argue a little bit that if we have higher-end jobs, we might need higher-end homes in Millersburg as well. And so that we're trying to acknowledge that that need exists. Doesn't mean we can't have lower-end homes. Certainly doesn't mean that the workers of our community don't need more affordable housing in more dense situations. But this is really trying to acknowledge this is one of the reasons why we have our ten thousand square foot lot pattern. And it's sort of tipping the hat to that.
Any other comments or reflections on this subset?
Bring it on, Monty. Oh, hang on, make sure you talk to the mic, otherwise we won't be able to get you on the record. Well, do the best you can.
You know, that confined space living, you talked about smaller lots. So my daughter lives in Portland and they're doing that all over, like really close.
Sure, in a big way in Portland, you bet.
Yeah, and indoor development.
Yes, and the way they do it is amazing. So they're drawing people with the big houses to come to the neighborhoods to go to their parties. They do like alley parties. They'll do zero lot line, row houses. And then a common area all along the back of it. And they have their own group parties all the time. And the big houses, people are coming to those.
Well, you're going to stop yelling at those parties, Monty, so we can hear you next time.
I was very afraid of going away from ten thousand square foot lots. That's real, for us, people could see it.
Well, we're jumping ahead a little bit, but we've got in the, retain the quality and character of our neighborhoods, we've got built in some preservation on that, but we'll get to that in a minute.
But I think that's, that's a great point. And I mean, what I'm hearing is that there's also something to be said about, you know, as, as, you know, there are, there is a greater variety of housing options. There's also a role of design that can be played in ways that make this housing feel and look good and understanding what that, what that means in Millersburg. So that works really well in Portland. Maybe what is in Portland doesn't work well here clearly, but like, it's, it's an example of, yeah, where design can play a good role in housing as neighborhoods and communities, rather than housing as boxes of constructed material.
Right, well put.
It would be interesting to see examples of companies that are working and that people really are enjoying and having that model to say, is that something that can work here?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and we tried getting a little, getting at that a little bit through the, just the visual preferences activity we were doing with, with the community. So we had a lot of photos, sorry, we had a lot of photos and images on all of our outreach boards. And really, we wanted people to kind of react to what they were seeing and help, just help understand like what, what it was about, what they were seeing that they liked or didn't like. And just, you know, kind of listen for those things and try to apply that to like, yeah, is it, is it having shared green space or is it having front porches where you can see your neighbors or, you know, what, what is it? So. Certainly, yeah. But you know, in the, in the, in, in doing the education and the outreach piece, we're, we're always trying to bring things to, to folks. So yeah, but I agree. It's always, it is always nice to see what's working in other communities and whether that feels applicable or could be in your own.
And also, on one of the slides, the slide I.
And also, on one of the slides, the slide I think has different kinds of instances and it shows a grassy area with all sorts of...
Yeah, like cottage housing. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and that looks sort of attractive.
Yeah.
And they have that in Corales.
They do. There's actually a lot of really interesting examples of what you described were cottage housing types. Um, there's a lot of really interesting examples of housing types that kind of get at what you need to do legally, but then also in a way that really like, can be really attractive um, and, and, and end up being a community benefit. Um, I, you know, I, I agree that housing is a really contentious issue and, and it's never in my backyard and, and whatnot, but there are, there can be a community benefit to certain things, um, if done well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anything on any of these policies and we can move on to the next one, which is about Millersburg's existing neighborhoods?
Think that's one, okay.
Yeah. So this subset is around the concept of retaining the quality and the character of existing neighborhoods. And so this is really in response to a lot of, um, a lot of just feedback and just understanding that Millersburg residents really do enjoy the communities that they have here, the neighborhoods that they have here and, and understanding that there's a high quality of life and livability and really wanting to maintain that in our existing neighborhoods. Um, so Policy 1, preserve the quality of existing neighborhoods and ensure that new neighborhoods, so any new neighbors, neighborhoods you might have, uh, and any infill partitions and divisions fit with that character and land form. Uh, number 2, retain the rural character of Millersburg's large lot residential lands north of Northeast Cosner Road and west of Northeast Old Salem Road. There's that geographic component that we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, number 3, maintain high-quality housing conditions through the enforcement of codes and ordinances. And number 4, ensure land uses allow for the efficient provision of public facilities and transportation networks. So, understanding that land use and transportation is a very connected topic. Any thoughts or feedback? Do this, do these echo the, the sentiment of kind of the, the header here?
This one's really laser beam aimed at the fear that we heard uh, in, in all the comments about apartments are coming, apartments are coming. We wanted to make it clear the city has no intentions of bringing high-density housing in this section of the city, back here, very specifically. But we wanted to put that in there to make it crystal clear, we might need some density somewhere besides right here someday.
Yeah, there's certainly a role to be played around policies for existing neighborhoods and then knowing that, yeah, in accommodating future growth, uh, population, um, there may be a need for new neighborhoods, which can be a very exciting thing for the, for the city.
Absolutely.
Um, any, should I move on to the last subset? Okay. Provide housing opportunity for all.
Oh, wait, that's not this either, is it? Sorry.
Of course.
That must be... It's this one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, so this has, this is kind of the section with the, the most number of policies. Um, I would say a lot of these are kind of, um, kind of a, a reworking of some of the existing concepts in your comprehensive plan. So you'll see some familiar concepts. Um, but, uh, number 1, so providing opportunities for housing at price and rent levels commensurate with the needs of current and anticipated residents. Support the need for all citizens of the community to obtain adequate housing regardless of their income, age, race, religion, sex, or ethnic background. Support homeownership and rental opportunities for all housing types. Provide opportunities for elderly residents to age in place by encouraging the development of housing types that are affordable and accessible, such as accessory dwelling units and retirement communities. Collaborate with services, any programs or organizations that provide opportunities for development of lower-cost housing in areas with access to jobs, public transportation, open spaces, schools, and supportive services and amenities. And then maintain information and resources on available housing, financing programs, and assistance programs in both the public and private sector that are suited to the needs of the community. Uh, next slide, I'll finish it up. Um, ensure the land use code includes clear and objective standards for housing development and does not have the effect of discouraging needed housing through unreasonable cost or delay or reducing the proposed housing density already allowed by zoning. Uh, ensure manufactured home parks shall continue to be allowed within the locational criteria of the land use code and protected from redevelopment to maintain Miller, Millersburg's existing affordable housing stock. Streamline the permitting process to reduce cost and delay of new housing units. Promote the development of accessory dwelling units as a means to contribute to the overall housing stock and rental market and allow manufactured homes on individual lots to increase housing choices. Some of these, as I said, are kind of coming from your current chapter, but just slightly reframed.
Some are state laws, uh, just wiggled in with a little bit different language. And so even if we got rid of them, we'd still have to do them.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's where the education part comes in. I think it's, uh, it's on us to let the public know why we were putting those in there, but I don't think it's a good idea to pull them out based on what the public is saying because they would still need to be done. Like the clear and objective, uh, standards, of course, and the manufactured homes, those are both state law. Well, it doesn't have to be in there. That's really just our way of... Yeah, it's just our way of trying to, because the state reviews these too. Uh, when, when we're done with this, it goes to the DLCD and, uh, the Department of Land Development and Conservation. And they look through it to make sure that it complies with, uh, all the state's requirements. That's one of the reasons we like to put these in here. And so when they see it, they go, check, check, check. You're good. Good job, Millersburg. To, to the public about which ones are...
There's a footnote here, this is not optional.
Well, I think a lot of the ones in housing opportunity for all would have that asterisk behind them because a lot of them... Sure.
And along that line, when I was talking about number 11, the allow manufactured homes on individual lots to increase housing choices, I was thinking that statement like that would cause people to call Matt, to call, call the city or talk to people and say, what's going on with this? And that would be the education component.
Hmm, for sure.
As, as you were saying, whether there was an asterisk or not, that people felt strongly about it would call to find out what they were talking about. Um, and like on number 8, I was thinking ensure existing manufactured home parks shall continue to be allowed to be of existing.
Oh, sure.
Certainly do. And they're actually a really important part of your current affordable housing stock. So that language is really important for just maintaining what you have.
Southern, southern, southern border. When you're almost in Albany and you're driving down that way, that's even further than that. Yeah, there's, there's two manufactured home parks hiding back there that you've probably always thought were City of Albany, but they're not. There are.
Your Housing Needs Analysis is a really great kind of reference document because it really clearly lays out exactly what your housing stock is and how, like, you know, what your affordability rates are and things like that. But yeah, you're, there is a, a manufactured home park that, um, does certainly, uh, contributes to any affordable housing that you do have. So it is very important to like, protect that.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep.
Well, and are manufactured homes, um, explained? Like, are there criteria?
In the development code.
Not, yeah, not in here.
Yeah, so in the development code, they are described.
Sure.
And so just to share kind of the hierarchy of information. Um, a comprehensive plan is very high-level, but what it does do is it directs work plans, programs, zoning and development code. So you do need development, so the, the comprehensive plan kind of directs development code and zoning. And so you, the, the code itself has really strong, really clear, specific um, descriptions of what the land uses are, what's a manufactured home park, where is it allowed? It's, all of that detail is in your development code, where it should be. Um, and the comprehensive plan and the development code just need to be, uh, non-conflicting in, in that manner.
That's state law right now, you bet. Sure, like how it's supposed to be placed and, and things like that? Oh, you know, you're totally correct. Uh, we have a set of design standards, uh, and it's pretty darn strict. So if somebody did put one in, they would have to almost make it look just like a single-family home. Matter of fact, our code even still requires that they add a two-car garage onto that. That's an absolute requirement. Now, we're kind of unique in that regard here in the city. Most cities aren't like that. But that's how strict we are with how they look because, uh, I think that addressed a lot of people's concerns out there as well. Oh, there you go. And then, because it looks just the same, right? Yeah, go through Palm Harbor over here. Most of them look fantastic. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, all of that is in the development code for sure. Yeah. Those, but those are good details to, to have and ensure you have it.
And now also on the number 11, the manufactured homes on a lot, that's the primary home on a lot.
Correct.
So you wouldn't have your regular, there's, and then an ADU manufactured home.
Right now, you could do an ADU that was, uh, was a manufactured home, but it'd have to be smaller than 650 square feet as the code is currently written. So that's, that's really a tiny home, um, more than it is a manufactured home. There is.
There are.
There is. There's, there's HUD standards and state requirements and building codes. Yeah, there's, yeah, they're very differently regulated.
There's a lot in the world of housing.
Yes, there is.
Any other thoughts or comments or feedback on these policies? Do you feel like what we kind of reviewed tonight reflects what we've heard through just our outreach, but then also the conversation we had in June? And would this be something that you would want to consider at a hearing?
And what way? What do you mean?
Um, so this will be an update to your comprehensive plan. So essentially the next steps are, right now it's in a Word document, but we would graphically format it and make it look nice. But beyond that, um, it would then move into the adoption, adoption proceedings. And that would include, uh, presenting it for a hearing to you all as Planning Commission. Right now, we're Advisory Committee, but we come to you as a planning, as Planning Commission for a hearing. Um, and then you would, at that hearing, recommend it to City Council to, uh, consider it for adoption.
And we're really asking if you think it's ready for that.
I think it, it answers a lot of, I mean, to me, some of the survey results. I, I think this, they speak to it and I, I want to think that I could defend it.
Right, right. Certainly.
Sure. That, that makes good sense. And this, of course, even if you think it's, uh, ready to go to a hearing, um, especially for Commissioner Young to, to explain this, when it goes to the Planning Commission hearing, it's not too late to change things. And so even if you went home and slept on this and realized that number 8 really bothered you, then you can come back to the hearing and we can still make changes at that point. So it's not in concrete, once we put it in a graphical format. Uh, we can still make a change or two if we have to before it goes off to City Council.
Certainly. A hearing is also yet another opportunity for public comment as well, you know? So there is an opportunity if the folks wanted to provide testimony for or against it, that would be, yeah, an opportunity for you to hear that.
I think we might have a full house.
Yeah, it would be exciting.
I can work.
But, yeah, certainly. I mean, I, I hope the, the draft language provides that balance of push and pull, um, that we just have to kind of have and when we talk about housing. Um, hence the organization of content between existing neighborhoods and kind of preserving those, but then also thinking about what we do need to do in terms of new neighborhoods. Um, so, yeah.
All right, want me to go to the next slide and talk about next steps then?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just said this, but, um, you know, I wanted, if, if there are, I, I heard, so I heard no revisions other than considering maybe footnoting, um, what policies were required. Now, the only reason I'm a little hesitant about that is because there is, um, some of the policies, there, there's a component of it that is required and then a layer of it that is city-led. Um, and so it's just, it's a little bit more nuanced than this is language from the state. Um, it's just like said in, uh, said within the, the frame, the city's voice essentially.
We might be able to add a, another paragraph in the introduction that really explains with a little bit more detail.
Yeah, do you think that would be helpful?
As a reference.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, for sure. I can, I can certainly do that. Right, which I think, I don't know, I think there, the first paragraph does say that. Uh, but maybe, maybe there's an opportunity for, for fleshing that out a little bit more.
Goal 10 addresses housing in Oregon and provides guidelines for local governments to follow in developing their local comprehensive land use plans and implementing policies. Just one more sentence. Goal 10 requires incorporated cities, uh, to complete an inventory of buildable lands and encourage the number of housing units in price and rent ranges, uh, commensurate with the final capabilities of its households. It, yeah, sort of says it. We can sharpen that up a little bit and add a little bit more.
Highlight Goal 10.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that. There's, yeah, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, we're, we're a little bit leery to say the state's a bunch of dirtbags and making us to do this, but I mean, they hear that from me regularly, trust me. Um, but, uh, I don't want to put it in writing because then they'll deny it, but we can certainly say something like...
Is funded by the state, so.
That's, that's the key word. Yeah, we should really, we need to add that in there somewhere.
Yeah, that sounds great. We will beef up that section so it's a little bit more clear. Great. Any other, like, key revisions that we should make before we put this into a format and bring it to you at a hearing? Yeah, I wish I, I should have, um, I, I gave you the graphic layout. Um, uh, yeah, I should have just given you a little snapshot of what it was. It'll just, uh, it won't be a, a Word document like how it is now or how your current comprehensive plan is. So hopefully it will be a little bit more visual, a little bit more user-friendly. Um, comprehensive plans are used by you as a planning commission. Uh, they're used by anyone that wants to apply for, um, a land use permit or, you know, the code references the, the comprehensive plan, but it can also be used by the community to lobby for things and, um, and whatnot. So it is definitely, uh, meant to be more user-friendly in its graphic form. Uh, so, yeah, we would essentially, if, if, I've noted the revision of beefing up that overview section. Um, our next step would be to put it into that layout and then come back to you at a hearing um, with this exact document in front of you, just in that layout, and then with the beefier overview section.
And that'd be a public hearing.
Yeah, and that would be a public hearing, correct. Yeah.
So what's the timeframe for that?
We had a, a sk, a preliminary date planned for that. What was that?
I don't know if we had a preliminary date yet, but I, there is, there seems to be some...
Before the end of the year, I think is what we're hoping.
Yeah, there does seem to be some time because, um, I think there needs to be a, a PAPA, uh, notification.
Forty-five day.
Yeah, or thirty-five?
Forty...
There's a certain timeline that we need to address.
It used to be forty-five, but they changed it and I can't remember the new number.
I think it's thirty-five day notice.
Okay, thirty-five.
Um, and then after the thirty-five day notice...
PAPA, by the way, is a really silly name for, uh, notifying the DLCD. That's their online interface system. It's called PAPA. Sorry. Yeah, but that's what lets us upload all these documents and begin that process. And when you do that, the DLCD takes that in and then they spam that out to all the different groups and agencies that they think might care about what you're proposing. And then that gives an opportunity for them to all provide feedback to us.
Right. Um, and then, so I would say that probably puts that, puts us out at a hearing sometime in early November.
Yeah.
Would be my, would be my guess.
And it's a comprehensive plan amendment, so there are certain findings that we have to write, uh, to put in the staff report before we can take it forward. We haven't started that yet, but, uh, sure, we're ready to roll proceeds and get into it.
Right, and then from there, you can either decide at that hearing to recommend it to City Council um, or go through more hearings. Uh, but then, you know, City Council would essentially be scheduled shortly after in the next month. So, yeah.
Yep. Matter of fact, if you recall, that's one of the reasons we rearranged when we meet is so we can go Planning Commission, City Council, bing, bing, yeah, right in a row, and not have to wait a whole month to go to City Council.
And our contract, so as a consultant, we're contracted to help support the city in, in that process. Um, I think our contract... Um, I think our contract ends at the end of December, but we are here to support for one planning commission hearing and one city council hearing. So I'll be down here two more times.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, ten to seven. I'm glad we were able to get through all of them.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question that on, um, because we didn't do a couple of things on, on the agenda, but since we're not.
You can handle this next time and say, hey, agenda. I didn't, I didn't even notice you're right.
Well, but since we're not in a planning commission meeting, can we do?
Oh, you, you can rearrange it and go through those things now if you want. Yeah.
But I mean, can we legally do that if we're just, if we're acting as an advisory committee now and know that the plan is.
Well, you can close out this agenda item as an advisory committee. So we can, now we can end the conversation about this housing chapter and then you can all proceed as your regular planning commission work session.
Correct. Yeah.
So I will excuse, should I excuse myself then?
You're welcome to hang around, but you don't have to.
Thank you. I'll see you all in a month.
And because the agenda items are now closed and we will, uh, continue with the rest of the planning commission meeting. Maybe now Jason can.
Yeah, let's embarrass him. Tell us about yourself.
Well, um, so I'm a resident here for almost two years now. Prior to that, um, I commuted for eleven years for Eugene up to the dirt like part of the port plant. So that was a long haul, but I had a parenting plan that required my presence with the dean, so I wasn't about to move. So I just kind of kept you in the long view. Exactly the way your survey.
Right, right. Exactly right.
Um, I'm the environmental manager at, uh, for Raucow, that's part of the port plant and deployed there since two thousand nine. So a couple of different roles, the technical manager and then eventually worked my way into environmental manager. So it's, it's really around compliance with, uh, all the environmental regulations around air and water. Waste water, storm water, um, emissions that come from our process. And then just ensuring that our facilities are compliant with all the state, federal and local regulations.
And city.
And city.
That's local.
That's local. Yeah.
So, but yeah, so anyway, that's, that's kind of my background. Um, I've had other careers as a, as a chemist working for, um, resident supplier for, um, wood products industry and then, um, also worked for state police, forensic services division for five years, right out of college.
It's quite a mix.
Yeah.
Blood and wood. All right.
Sometimes they shall be.
Roses and blood, yeah.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, so, uh, election of the vice chair.
Yeah, we lost our vice chair, um, with Mr. Hickam because he went up to the city council and he was our vice chair. So now we need someone else to play that role.
Do I have any?
Nominations?
Nominations or sure, I'll do it. Monty?
I, I, I love doing what we're doing, but I'm still too busy. I haven't figured out retirement yet. So I coached at the high school. I would not have been here tonight if I didn't have a bus driver. I would love to do that, but the soccer.
You're not reliable.
I, I don't want to feel guilty about not being here, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you be willing to do it? I'm here most of the time.
It would be, but sometimes I get pulled out of town. I just want to try and not be a little bit.
Okay. Jason, I don't, I don't want to do it to you.
Why don't you know what it entails?
So Carol, I am asking you, would you be willing to be our vice chair for a while?
I'd rather not.
Well, it looks like Will will be.
And that's fine. I think, uh, Will has aspirations to go to city council as well. And so I think he would appreciate the experience. Matter of fact, that's how we got Will, is that he, he went for city council and didn't win. And so we said, you know what, why don't you go ahead and jump on our planning commission? And so, um, while his attendance, uh, here today, he's not here today, but, uh, I know that since he's got higher aspirations, maybe that'd be something he would enjoy doing.
Okay.
Throw him under the bus.
Throw him under the bus. I would like to see the nomination or can I just appoint him?
Uh, let's go ahead and do a nomination and let everybody vote on it.
Okay. All right. Is there someone who will nominate him? Okay. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that Will.
Canate.
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 Um, be our new vice chair. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. And then we have the meeting minute approval, very short.
Yes.
I didn't see anything, then I'm not coddling.
There will never be another coddling.
There will never be. We need a new Connie.
And that's okay.
Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the meeting? I'll take a motion to approve him.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. Second? Second?
Commissioner Young, you can feel free to abstain from that because you weren't here for the first meeting.
I did abstain.
Do we have? Four of us?
Yeah.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, approve the minutes from July nineteen, twenty twenty-two of the planning commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, nay? Okay. Been approved, uh, minutes of July nineteen, twenty twenty-two. And at, at six fifty-five, I call a meeting to adjourn.
There you go. All right. Thank you much. Uh, Scott Cowan.
Oh, really?
Yeah, is the interim mayor. Yep.
And when is the next election?
Uh, November.
Oh, okay. And is Scott running?
Scott is running. You bet. There, the only two, uh, we have two vacancies or well, rather Scott's seat was up for real.